Changes in addition. What was the other change?
Uh, no, these items.
It's what?
Please continue to do the bike.
Okay. It's a bike.
On tonight's regular?
Yeah. That hasn't signed off on yet. They won't let us sign off on it until they sign.
The CBG funds?
Yeah.
So is it gonna get us in trouble like it got at City Park?
Once again, I see.
When we put the animal shelter there.
Things to rock in the boat.
Yeah.
Get, get, get flutied.
Is that what they're making sure or?
No, it's the actual construction project. Not the, not the.
In the wetland part?
Not the, not the designation of the land. It's the actual construction contract. I understand.
With the person that's been installed for us?
Right, yeah, they have a review period. It's like two weeks, so like halfway through or something.
We don't have. Got it. Okay. So the use of the land, I mean, that's not gonna be a problem. Okay.
I can't remember. Think of what we could possibly have back then. So, but I can't remember what happened to the bike lane.
What used federal funds for the actual park, or the park away from the animal shelter? Where you had to real hang that million dollars?
Like Jake, Tom and Will are online. Jake, Jake's just in the process of moving over.
Three online and four here. I mean, three online and four here with five.
Yep.
I got your text. I had your picture up. We decided, well, go ahead and call them.
Oh. Got it. Do two things at once. Anytime I have Zoom, I have to have my phone and this and sometimes my other iPad. I have one of my old city iPads that I haven't wiped it. So it still has everything on it, so I can use it as a double. So that helped during COVID. I take the whole coat off and that's for back. All right, we'll call to order our study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is May 24th, 2022, 4:30, and we're in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Building. All members of the council are present either through Zoom or in person. And we'll move to our approval of the minutes for May 17th. Is there any discussion or an approval?
The approved minutes. Please, 17, second.
All in favor, well, with you guys on Zoom, anybody opposed? Seeing nobody opposed, they pass. So did you move that or is he moving that?
It just is moving on the whoever speaking, so he may have unmuted his mic for a second and then.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I not miss anybody with as many being on there, so. Okay, thank you. We'll now review tonight's regular agenda. And it sounds like there's some adjustments?
Yes, thanks ma'am, we have two adjustments. The first one is the addition of the energy efficiency resolution, both on the study meeting and on the regular meeting.
Okay.
And then the other one is we were asking to remove, or are we asking to just continue to next week?
To continue to June 7th.
Continue to June 7th. The resolution on the regular medium, meeting item number 9A. This is the bike park purchase for American Ramp Company. There's no problem per se with the project, but HUD hasn't, hasn't finished their review, period. And so, Barrett, by their rules, we can't approve it till they approve it. So we gotta wait for them to approve it before we can bring it back to approve it, so. Hopefully they'll be done by June 7th.
You'd like to use it?
Yeah.
Wanna see you on the.
Can you write electric scooters on the back? I'm sure they will, so, yeah. Sounds good. All right, I have one question. On the consent agenda tonight, there's a delay agreement for sidewalk curb and gutter.
For the regular meeting, yes.
For the regular meeting, yeah. For the property on 5450. And since we never really execute those, my own personal opinion is I don't think we should do it. We want sidewalk curb and gutter there. I thought we decided in the motions that we made. So, just as a side note, I didn't notice what the address was last week, so I'm sorry I didn't bring it up last week.
Okay, so are you asking to remove it, sorry?
No, I'm just discussing it. I just said, oh, anybody else has any comments on it or an opinion?
Do you know why it's delayed?
Well, they wanted to lay agreement because there's no stormwater and the runoff would go. But the runoff's already going into the other property, so.
We already kind of discussed that previously, then.
We didn't think we needed it.
Discuss it for this particular one, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we asked for the sidewalk curb and gutter.
That was one of the issues, well, what about stormwater, well?
There's, yeah, there's a ditch right there that it runs to 35th anyway, so it was still going that ditch. I talked to Dan just before this meeting to make sure.
Sure.
That it would work, so.
Well, I mean, it is an agreement. Well, you mean work, meaning the stormwater won't change significantly, or would work to just not approve the.
Not approve it, yeah, and just have them put the sidewalk curb and gutter in with their development like we asked them to.
Well, for certain, you know, it is, even though it's a consent agenda item, even though you've done many of these before, it's still an agreement. So, yeah, if you guys don't want to approve it, you know.
But how, but, and just they'll install it when they build the buildings?
Yeah, that would be the requirement.
The houses, okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure they have to, because how many delay agreements have we really followed through and executed?
None that I am aware of.
Yeah.
And you know the reason why it's not, it's not a staff or even a design thing, it's the whole, you're usually doing these delay agreements in areas that, like Dan mentioned, it doesn't have, don't have stormwater improvements. There's no immediate plan for putting them in. And for a long, long time down the road, there still isn't in places, usually like in Chesterfield or those sorts of things, so.
Well, we don't even. We would be, if we didn't have the delay agreement, we would be the only property with that.
Right, right, yeah.
Or gutter and sidewalk.
So, just to illustrate a larger example, say we're over in Chesterfield where there's really flat grades, not this one.
Right.
And you have a block where you've had these old, old bots sort of develop one by one, and you would, if you required the delay agreement to not be approved, and they required to put the curb and gutter in, you'd have this situation where half of them would have the curb and gutter in. It might line up, it might not, or it might be of good quality, or it might not, it might be really old, it might be really new. But given the way the development patterns go on over there, there are never really any for certain that you're ever gonna get the rest of the blocks, that block I'm using as examples, houses in, unless we did, went through and did some sort of a project like we're considering currently where we would put sidewalks in somewhere. And then we're kind of doing it ourselves anyway, unless we executed the whole delay agreement, so.
Well, on this one, we've had three approved developments in the last, less than six months.
Yeah.
And if we hadn't delayed the first two, this would be sidewalk from here to 35th, recontinually.
Okay, yeah, so.
So, so the fact that those kind of went by.
Right, right, I'm just illustrating the whole concept down. I have no issue with the particular one.
So with those delay agreements, because we're gonna have them do these, and those other two, we just call them in now and say, let's get them done, and let's get them done, and let's have this road be done.
So I heard that you had spoke with Dan, I understand.
I didn't ask you that part, that just came to me.
I understand Eric, Dan may have gone to Eric already, but we're looking into that. So how would you, how would you then enforce the delay agreement?
Say, we're ready now. Yeah, well, they haven't started building on those two.
So we're, we're ready now. We've got three in a row here that, yeah, can do that.
All right.
I'm assuming, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? No? All right, back to the study session. So tonight, our first is the budget hearing on the budget reopening for 2122. And Mr. Welch is on Zoom and will be taking that one.
Yes, Mr. Welch.
Jim, you there?
Yeah, sorry about that, I was a little late getting on to the, onto the Zoom call, hesitated a moment, thank you. So as you are aware, this is our quarterly and our final budget opening for the end of the year, which allows the city to authorize expenditures for new money that's been off, that has come into the city for projects that have come up, other expenditures that just come up as part of the dynamic nature of running a city. Within this, there are grants, there is money that we've received from other sources. I'd be happy to kind of highlight some of those as I usually do and then take any questions that you might have. So we've had a couple of grants that we've come in since the last budget opening. And we had a small one from the state of Utah EMS grant. There's a pedestrian ramp project. Also, the cultural center has, well, the Harmon Center has received a small grant from Arts and Museum Grant, which I think you're familiar with, because they've granted, they've had several grants that have gone to the Cultural Center project. The rest of them are barely routine. I'll point out a couple of those that you might be familiar with, since they've been discussed at council. There's a bike lane project for $720,000, which is money that's coming from UDOT. There's also the lease for the, well, it's for IT backup and security equipment that's, that's coming to the city. The biggest part of the budget opening for the general fund is some money that is coming over from park impact fees for the construction of various park projects. Park impact fees can only be spent on park projects. And this is an authorization to allow parks to use that money before year end. There is an overlay project, which is a transfer from Stormwater Fund, some Mountain View corridor betterments, which are usually taking care of the side of the, the building, I'm, the side, side of the project, I'm sorry, to cover either landscaping or trails or sound walls, whatever Public Works has for those. Now it'll be coming from monies that are received from Stormwater also. So those are the big ones, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And then there are some other budget openings that will be taking place on a much smaller basis with some of the other agencies that you'll discuss later.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Welch? So do you have a breakdown of what the parks projects will be?
I don't have the detail on that.
Can we get that before next Tuesday?
Yes, absolutely. Which one are you looking at?
Number 13.
1.3.
Yeah. Breakdown on that, and then I have a question of why we're buffering the bike lanes on 31.
All right. Sorry, buffering the bike lanes on 31.
Right.
Item is this?
Two. It says two, it's in other right there, 720.
Other bike lane project, buffered bike lane project 3100 south from 40 to 48 northwest, okay. So I'm not sure exactly what buffer means in that particular context. Dan, do you?
Yes.
Detail on that, you wanna address that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the buffered, a buffered bike lane is just a, it's literally as it sounds, just a buffer between the travel lanes and the bike lanes. It's like a two foot space that's striped.
Okay, so there's no.
There's no physical barrier, it's just striped on the asphalt.
Okay, perfect. Much better.
Extended shoulder.
Yep, it's like a wider shoulder and it really just brings attention to the bike lanes.
And it'll be green?
No.
No green line?
White paint. It'll be, it'll be like 4100 south or 2700 west. 4100 south between 27th west and 3600 west has buffered bike lanes. And 27th west out here, south of City Hall, has buffered bike lanes.
So we're not distinguishing with the green?
Two white lines.
Okay.
We're not using.
And bikes on it?
Not on any green paint in the city yet.
It does, they do have the little bike.
They have the bikes, the goggles, okay, just not the green. Is that like copyrighted by Salt Lake? Have the green? Oh, there we go. I don't drive Western as much to see it, okay. Those were my two questions. Nobody else has questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just had a question for, for Jim. How, how is the grant revenue compared to previous years? I would imagine last year we had a lot of COVID grant money and, and are we still seeing that come through? Or, and how is this compared to, to prior to the pandemic?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilman, that, West Stone. The, the grant money is pretty consistent with what we receive in, in previous years as far as things like road projects, stuff for the arts, projects that go to law enforcement. Because of the COVID crisis, there were some specific grants that we received that have pretty much been used. So we're not seeing much of that anymore, most of this is pretty well routine. Occasionally, there's something that might come up if, if, for example, one of our arts organizations, whether it be the Harmon Home or the Cultural Center applies for a specific pool of money that another agency's received. So it's, it's pretty much, there's not a lot of things that are coming any more specific to that. There's a possibility that we may see, see some additional money with the ARPA funds, but we haven't seen that yet.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes. May I?
Mike, we can't understand you, Tom. Light's not working.
Can you, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but it's muffled.
Oh. How, how about right now, is it okay, clear?
Yeah, I think we're all right.
Okay, well, to follow up with the Will question, did we receive money from COVID-19, Jim?
Yeah, the, the COVID-19 projects are that, all those COVID grants that we received originally for, there was CARES Act money that came in for the purchase of personal protective gear. There are some monies that are still left over from those, so we're not receiving new money for that. I know that the fire department, police department have some funds that have been reserved that they've received from specific COVID funds that are likely not entirely spent yet. If those are not spent by the end of fiscal year, we've already done some budget openings for them. They will be rolled over into the next year as long as they're eligible. And as long as we're reporting those to the federal government, which we'll continue to do.
Can you put that on a statement somewhere so we can take a look at it? Please.
Sure, we can get you, I guess, whatever kind of detail you're interested in. There's a, there's a ton of different sources for that, because.
Would love to see that, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our next item, which is application Z62022. Mr. Powell?
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so Z622, we have Mr. Pastrick, who is presenting that item.
Thank you, and I'll share my screen as usual here. All right, so this property is located at 4625 West Lake Park Boulevard. It's in the Lake Park Corporate Center. You can see the property that's outlined in red here, there's an existing office building on the property now. And it's a little unusual, the north portion of the property, you can see with that line, it kind of bisects the property, it's actually a zoning boundary. So the north portion of the property is zoned M or manufacturing, and the south portion is zoned the BRP zone or Business Research Park Zone. There's just a close up of that. And then here's a zoning map, so kind of zoomed out. So again, in red, you have the property in question. So part of the Lake Park Corporate Center is in this Business Research Park Zone, which is the blue on the zoning map here. And then you have the areas to the north in the gray, which are the manufacturing zone. So the property owner in this case is requesting the zone change. And the reason is, is they're looking for tenants for this office building. The manufacturing zone does not allow medical office, but the Business Research Park Zone does. And while they've had interest from medical users, they're wanting to rezone the entire property to the Business Research Park Zone. So again, part of it already is that zone, they're just asking that the entire property be in that one zone.
Anybody have questions or comments?
That's across the street from Mike C.
Right.
If, does it, how would it affect the other properties if we just did all of it?
You know, essentially, the planning commission asked the same question, actually. We, as staff, we feel like the, the Business Research Park Zone is, is more fitting for Lake Park. And it's really stayed that way, just that it, it's been zoned that way for a long time. The uses that they had developed were allowed in the zone, so there were just never any push to change it. But certainly in terms of what's been built and what we want to see in, in the business park would be more fitting under that zone.
I don't know if my office is in Lake Park, I don't know if any manufacturing in Lake Park on the south side. I think a little bit to the north, I guess, yeah. The granite place. Yeah, it makes more sense, I think, to have that all be business park.
I have the same question. I was surprised that this is zoned manufacturing, we had to change it.
Well, and as the city, could we just do what's south of Lake Park Boulevard for right now? Or would it take each landlord or coming in and asking for a zone change?
The city could proactively rezone any, any of those areas that are zoned manufacturing to the Business Research Park Zone if the council directed that.
Seems like it would make sense for the, for the vacant properties that are along both sides of the road of Lake Park Boulevard. What do you think, Steve?
I, I would agree, I, I think there, there are in the business park CCNRs, that again, the city does not enforce, that would probably preclude many of the uses that are allowed in the manufacturing zone. But just from the city's perspective, I think, again, my opinion, it makes more sense to have the entire park in the Business Research Park Zone.
And if there was some special request that, that required the manufacturing zone, they could apply for a zone change?
How much ground is left as zoned as manufacturing? Is it everything that hasn't been brought in for development?
That's, that's vacant?
Yeah.
So I'm not exactly sure acreage wise, but you do have this partial, for example, here that is on the north side, it's still vacant, it's in the M-zone. And I believe as you move east, just off the map, there are some parcels, for example, around the hotel there that are still vacant, that are in the M-zone. And you also have some on the south side that are, that are, and again, some of these, it's odd because they're split, right? The partial has like this one, but there are still a few vacant parcels to the south as well.
So there must be some reason that this was all either left or incorporated into the park as manufacturing back when it's originally done, do you know what that is?
I don't, and, and certain, we can do more research on, I believe at the time, my recollection is when this business park was developed, the zoning was already in place. And, and because the zoning allowed, both zones allowed the office park, they just went with the existing zoning, is what I recall.
And I, I can't remember if you were actually involved, and I was not, when the original zoning and, like, park was, park was put together.
It was just before my time.
Right, and, and mine, so are you aware of any conversations from a preference wise standpoint that the property owners had or anything like that?
I don't.
So we have the, well, something's been built over where the Welch place was. Is Felix still doing the spine clinic?
I, I believe so.
Single thing there?
I believe so.
So will he have manufacturing in there, or is it all going to be research and development?
That one, I believe they have some industrial component to that. That is in the manufacturing zone and is technically outside of Lake Park.
Lake Park itself.
Itself, correct.
Okay, because it's on that side of the Gulf Coast Road?
Right.
That's the only one I could think of that might have a possibility of manufacturing, so. So would we just wanna talk to those people and see if they?
That's what I would advise, before we just go rezone in the whole.
Yeah, because I don't think we can just say, let's do south of that road next week. I think it'd be appropriate to send somebody out to speak to people and see if that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
And any, just for what it's for, even the Business Research Park Zone does still allow light industrial, which means doing things inside the building. It just doesn't allow things outside of the, of a building.
So with what they're doing at the, I don't know what the building is, so that's all I can do is what it, this fine place.
Innovasis.
Innovasis?
The Brent Felix building you're referring to, yes, Innovasis.
Okay, so that one, they could still do whatever they're gonna do with that research and development and manufacturing a little bit? On the light manufacturing?
From the light side.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So maybe let's look at doing that. Is there enough, so for the want that, think that's proven?
I would say rather than do a piecemeal.
Yeah, when they have problems. Okay, there we go.
Yeah, we'll go research the history, see what's going on there and approach the business or the property owners and see where we're at.
So just to clarify then, so before we actually pull the trigger, so to speak, and start the process, would the council like us to come back and just let you know what we find before we officially start that process?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that's wise.
Thank you.
We can still do this one by itself. But then maybe just clean it up.
Right.
Okay, and I'm sure it's not gonna be a two week process, so just however you can get it done. Okay.
It's an interesting question, I've never heard the question, at least that I remember raised by anyone before at this side of the development process or the property owner development side.
Yeah, and not being able to have a medical, so what is the complication, what can't be in there?
Medical office.
So that one building, that's all there is, but it's a call center for a medical office.
Right, they don't actually do, like, actually have doctors at that.
This one would have doctors.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think that still fits. Yeah, I guess the other thing is the list of what this would open up to being allowed in there. And you've got the table in here, so. Okay, looks like everybody's good with that, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll now move to resolutions, and we have 22-92, and we'll turn the time over. Well, do you wanna be in the middle of this, Mr. Springmeyer, to begin with, or only if we have questions?
Yeah, ma'am, we're just, we're just putting it on at you guys' direction. We're available, we got John, got myself, got Eric, great kind of legal questions, but we don't have a presentation.
Okay.
We also did check, there's no new information that we've been made aware of.
Nobody sent us anything.
Right, so we're pretty much the same situation we were last year.
Okay. You have questions?
So, we're talking about item number six here, 2292, right?
Six eight.
But this is on tonight's.
Yes, but we're just reviewing it today, if there's any other questions or anything?
So I received an email today from Harmon's, I don't know if somebody else, I got that, make sure you, I encourage you to read that. And, and we just got one from a representative who sponsored the original bill, too.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move to 22-93. Contract for pavement. Mr. Johnson.
Dan, are you presenting this, or you have an Eric do it? Okay.
Eric was crossed out and Dan was written in, so.
Very good.
And I didn't go down far enough to see Steve's on the last.
She was correct today.
Thank you.
So we bring to you a contract, we recommend you approve this contract between the city and Morgan Pavement for the placement of an asphalt polymer surface treatment. It's a sprayed product that sprayed onto newer pavements to preserve them and prolong the life of, of newer asphalte, keeps the oils fresh in the existing pavement mat and makes the roads look nice and black and pretty and clean when they're all done. So this is, it's our recommendation that you, to approve this contract for, so this, this is a contract in the amount of 312, $12,000 roughly. And we're requesting authorization to spend no more than $330,000 via potential change orders. And to give you a bit of context of scale, we're, we'll be. And to give you a bit of context of scale, we're, we'll be sealing roughly nine miles of subdivision streets with this project, in addition to the parking lot at Stonebridge Golf Course. This is a similar product. We, we've recently placed that this same product, but with a different placement method on the Maverick Center Lot D parking lot, and that's kind of been, been in process for the last week or so. But that's my report unless, any questions?
Just one bid?
One bid, yeah.
And does it include restriping and?
Yes, this does include restriping.
And it was lower than your estimate?
It was.
I thought you'd lead with that.
That's a good story to tell, isn't it?
Have we worked with Morgan before?
We have. They've done the same product and the same placement, um, this very similar workforce in the past and have done a great job. This complements our, uh, city perform, our self-perform slurry seal program that we do in-house. For context, we plan to do twenty-five to thirty miles of subdivision roads this year internally with our own city crews, so gives you an idea. The slurry seals better for older pavements. And it grows thicker and thicker as it, as it, you know, as we've applied it several times on several older roads, but our goal with this, with this project is to hit the new pavements.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So our communication, turn the time over for recreation and facilities to Nancy Day.
Good afternoon, Councilman and Mayor. Appreciate you being here and having the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about recreation facilities. You've heard from me a lot. One of, one of the things that we really wanted to try to do is, is help identify with you a little bit and give you an understanding of all the things that we do. You'll recall a while, not terribly long ago, a month or so ago, um, I did a presentation on some of the summer special events. I won't be focusing on those. These are more of the ongoing things with our recreational facilities within our department, as well as the recreational programs. They're coming from that. So with that, we'll jump right in. So want to talk a little bit about the positive impact of recreation facilities as we go through this. As you can see, the, the interaction from the community really creates the bonds, which makes it a strong and, and inclusive community. And as we talk about, uh, community centers, really all of these facilities fall under that, that category or that definition, if you will. There, they bring the community together and, uh, they're able to, to bond, as it mentions here, and so you can classify them as recreation facilities. It's just what I've done for this presentation, but they're really truly community centers for our, our community. And I've listed the ones that I'll be just talking briefly about in this presentation below under facilities. Uh, so of course, the Family Fitness Center is one, or as it is affectionately known for by our youth and teens, they call it the Rec. Uh, so, uh, it's a very positive place for, for everybody within our community. Both golf courses would fall under this, this classification as well. And our Harmon Senior Recreation Center, as well as the Utah Cultural Celebration Center and the West Valley Performing Arts Center. So all of those, uh, fall into these categories. And what I wanted to identify briefly under recreation for all of these is we take a look at what we're providing for the community, where are the gaps, what are we missing, and what does our community want to see? You know, how do we engage the community and really find out a little bit more of what they would like to see from each of these areas? And so one of the things that what we do is, is termed programming blueprint, where we take a look at the, the health and wellness elements from each of these areas, right? And so that would fall into even, uh, not just physical health and wellness, but emotional, intellectual, just this kind of this well-rounded quality of life opportunity. Educational, um, which can be anything from an educational exhibit at the Cultural Celebration Center to the youth participating in a program, uh, such as, uh, itty-bitty basketball, right, where they're playing, they're enjoying, but they're also learning the skill set for some of the life skills. Uh, there's competitive natures, um, or non-competitive, so we look at a balance there, as well as group or team and individual. And we also, uh, look at, uh, the, uh, the more structured or developed programs, if you will, leagues, tournaments, that kind of thing, versus the non-structured or the open recreation. So you're just coming to enjoy whatever the facility is and whatever they're offering. So we take a look at all of that, and certainly, as I mentioned, talk to the community. And this is why they're so important. Um, you can see here that, uh, it really truly is what we see where our citizens live and what some people deem as, uh, do life, right? It's not just a leisure activity for a lot of them. This is where they come, a lot of people every single day. It is a part of their life, a part of what they are doing. They're safe facilities, they're safe hubs. It's one of the things that we really try to focus on is making sure that people feel safe, that they feel comfortable in, in each of these areas. Uh, I talked about the active healthy lifestyles, encouraging that and the educational opportunities. Um, it's also a place where we celebrate differences and have, you know, it's inclusive. Uh, no matter what their background, no matter what their ability level is, uh, that they can participate. Uh, socially acceptable behaviors, and quite honestly, it's an essential service for our citizens and for our community. You've heard me speak before about the seniors at, uh, the Harmon Senior Recreation Center and, and, uh, what a difference it made in their lives, especially, we realized it even more so during the pandemic. Um, you've heard me talk about, uh, some of the veterans that are in the Veterans Golf League, that, um, you know, some had never golfed before, but they got off certain medications or certain, um, addictions by participating in a program such as this. Um, the teens or the youth that we see at the, the Family Fitness Center that have said, and it, and it breaks your heart, but have said that they feel safer there than they do in their own homes. To these individuals and to many others, this is essential. And we're very grateful for the opportunity and for your support to be able to provide these types of facilities and these types of programs for all of these individuals and, and more so within our community. So let's jump right in. The first place that I want to talk about is the Harmon Senior Recreation Center. And as you can see at the top, it is the most important resource for our aging community within our city. And I say that because it's not just about the facility, it's not just about what they offer. Um, but the staff at this facility will help seniors with any questions they have. And the seniors know that. They can ask the staff, you know, how do I get this done, or, or what do I do here? And if our staff doesn't have the answers, they know where to look to find the answers for that. Um, and we real, we really saw this, uh, during the pandemic. Some of you may recall or reported that early on, when the vaccines were made available, a lot of the seniors, especially the older seniors, uh, did not know, um, you know, how to run the computer and how to set an appointment, which was needed at that time to go get their vaccine, and they were able to talk with the staff, the staff helped them through this. And so that's just an example of the service they get. Yes, Mayor?
So do you have computers there for them to use?
We do, and we, we have classes and we try to train them. We got some iPads and that's been fairly successful, but we still have some that are a little resistant, uh, to that, but yes, absolutely. Great question. So some of the numbers. So what we've seen over the last little bit of this fiscal year that we're in, as we've been tracking, is almost ninety-eight percent increase in, uh, participation in some of the programs. Now, remember that even last fiscal year, especially earlier on, we were still limited in some of the programs we could offer. But what we're seeing is the seniors want back. They want to be back. They want to be doing these things. It's important to them. Meals served up sixty-six percent. And ninety-eight percent very satisfied. This was actually during the, the Omicron a little bit, and we saw a few seniors that were frustrated that we weren't offering everything. So actually, I think that would be higher now, so, but I wanted to point that out. Camp Wrinkles in a couple of weeks, you know, I, I just listed some of the programs we have. Some are once a year, some are every day. There's many, many more than this. These are just some examples for you to, to look at that are successful. And then some of the needs on this that, that we see, um, and you'll see this in several of the areas are facility updates. It is an older home, especially the home element of it, right, because it was added on. But there's some, some larger things that are capital, not as many, but like with the elevator, you know, it's, it's kind of getting there to where we need to replace it more so than the repairs. Some of it's fairly simple. It's replacing some of the furniture or painting or some of those types of things. And so we work on those throughout the years. We have the funds to do so. Uh, the staff is really aware of, of those types of things. Um, and then, uh, just ongoing planning and senior involvement. One of the unique things with this recreation center, community center is that there's constant change. Now, you talk about the Family Fitness Center, you always have the youth and the teens and the seniors, and you have some change and some, some things that happen from generation. But as we look at the Senior Recreation Center, we've got the baby boomers now coming, right? And then we're going to have the Gen X or whatever is next in there. We've got all the different seniors and they all are, they're, they're, they've been able to learn more technology, or maybe they have more disposable income. There's changes that are happening that we have to be prepared for in this facility more than other facilities that we have. And so those are some of the things that we're looking at and identifying. So, okay, so now let's run to our, uh, golf courses here. And I, I thought this was kind of interesting that I put up top, you know, most of us, we do landscaping, we do yard work uh, because we want our homes to look good, or there's different reasons, and sometimes we don't really identify what the tangible benefits are of that. Some may know. Mayor, you probably have a really good understanding on that, but what I wanted to point out is we get the same benefits for our entire community from the green spaces at our golf courses. And, uh, some people might not realize that, the, at the environmental advantages, not only for, for each of us as individuals and as a people, but also for the wildlife that exists within our city, so that's something for us to remember. So I have the twenty-twenty-one season numbers up here because we just started our twenty-twenty-two season. Um, but, uh, you can see the rounds at both golf courses. These are up. Uh, the ridge, it's up about two thousand from the year previous, about three thousand for Stonebridge and rounds. Um, remember that when the pandemic hit for this particular area, uh, they were only shut down for a couple of weeks as far as rounds go, as far as golfing goes. However, we did have to make changes in single-use-only carts, some of that. What was really impacted at the golf courses was the food and beverage operation. Uh, the events, even the tournaments to a certain degree, because they wanted the food and beverage as a part of that. Uh, but people were still out golfing. So we've seen an increase on that. Tournaments went up, um, thirteen from the year previous. Events went, have gone up, uh, last season from the season before by ninety-eight. So there was only thirty-two the year previous. The, the good news on some of this, too, is that even at the very beginning of this season, we're seeing an increase from what we saw last year. So, so that's good. That's a good, you know, we're, we're happy with that. There's all kinds of recreation that are tied in with this, including just the community play. You go out, you play around, or the corporate play, which we see typically more at Stonebridge, being in Lake Park and having twenty-seven holes. That helps tremendously. Uh, leagues, you've got your senior men's, ladies, juniors. You, you know, the Veterans League is up at the ridge, but both courses actually, uh, do events and, and have different groups come, uh, for the military and the veterans. As a matter of fact, this Thursday at the ridge, we have, uh, Veterans On Course, which is a group through the UGA, the Utah Golf Association. It is free for active military members as well as veterans. They go, they, they have like nine, maybe only seven. It's either seven or nine, different times slated for the whole season. They go all over the state and they've selected the ridge. This is not the first time, by the way, they've come to one of our golf courses. But they'll be at the ridge this Thursday. It's free for the veterans and military members. They get, um, a group lesson. They get to play nine holes, and then they get dinner and a speaker afterwards, and they don't have to pay a dime to do it. So it's a very, very good program that the UGA has put together for that. Um, and then also we have the high school. So Hunter High School, the home course is the ridge and Granger High School at Stonebridge. Uh, so some of the tournaments include not only a lot of the, the business tournaments, but also for the school districts. A couple of weeks ago, Stonebridge hosted, uh, the, uh, six A girls championship. So they love coming and playing on our courses. And then, of course, there's lessons and clinics, private group, um, and certainly adaptive. If any of you are interested in, in checking out our adaptive golf cart for people with mobility issues, I'd be happy to show you that. It's, it's unique and it's something that we offer to be able to provide that service for people that need it. Um, and then some of our needs, I put branding, the, the, the golf courses do really a pretty good job with that, but we're always wanting to look at it, see if we can do things a little bit better. And then the continued successes listed here, uh, the facilities are great. Uh, but what are some things we can do to continue with that success? Same thing with the customer service of the staff. Um, and then also continued successes with food and beverage. I would say, since we're on the right trend, to continue with that and do more so, and so we're, we are, uh, booking up and, and doing better with that. So that's one of the things that we're working on as well. And then there's some facility updates with that, uh, very similar to what I mentioned. Some are capital and some are, um, more facility updates. All right, so the Cultural Center Performing Arts Center. I really like the last sentence in here, if you can kind of look at that. The culture and art are wonderful ways of preserving and strengthening a strong community sense of place. They really are. We take pride in bringing exhibits and different things from all across the country there, because it's wonderful for our community that may not have an opportunity to go see that somewhere else, to have it in their own backyard and to be able to see that. At the same time, we also want to be sure that we're identifying with the cultures that are within our community and enhancing those in different ways and really preserving that to strengthen our community as well with who's here. And I think that's very important that we remember that. Uh, numbers for the Cultural Center, participation, um, is up and, uh, revenue is also up. You can see the numbers there. Remember during the pandemic, this particular, um, Recreation Center facilities, uh, were shut down. You know, the, the Cultural Center pretty much couldn't do anything during that. So it's been quite a rebuild, um, since we've been able to open that up a little bit more. And the Performing Arts Center, as far as operating it, has only been a little over, I think, a year and a half. So we're still somewhat in our infancy. Uh, but again, we're seeing increase in, and in attendance. And, uh, you've heard me talk about that a few weeks ago, so I won't dwell on that. Uh, you can see all the different recreational, uh, opportunities that are exhibited from both of these fine facilities. The education, you could look at the Art Rageous programs. As a matter of fact, through Art Rageous and as a collaboration with the school district, we had a, our first summer concert last Thursday at the amphitheater, uh, was a teen hip-hop concert, and they really reached out to the local high schools for that. And it was freezing, but it still went on. So, uh, they did, the performers didn't miss a beat. They did a great job with that and so did staff. Um, and then some of the same needs there, the, the branding, especially with the theater, right, and really pulling that together and letting the community know what it's all about. Community involvement and, uh, discussion on what they'd like to see in these. Reevaluating the processes and the facility use. In bringing back the Cultural Celebration Center, they had a lot of events there, a lot of conferences, if you will, those types of things. Some of those won't come back because some of them found that it's cheaper for them to do it via Zoom. And they'll probably stay that way. So we have to rethink a little bit of how we're managing that and running that particular business element of that facility. That's, that's part of what that is there. Fundraising, uh, is actively going on and needs to continue as well as some of the facility updates and capital repairs. Same thing, I mean, you can look at, uh, the stage, one point seven million for the stage at the theater, which any of us that saw it in its prime, when it could do all its functions, is amazing, and we want to get back to that. Uh, but that's a little bit of a hefty price tag right now, right? But there are other things, uh, the carpeting, uh, painting, some of the furniture, some of those types of elements that, that we could maybe focus on a little bit more. All right, so now let's jump into the Family Fitness Center and Centennial Pool. So you've heard me talk about this quite a bit, that these recreation or community centers, um, they provide opportunities, as it says here, for the residents to be active. But it really is, you know, we talk about the healthy communities and what we can do with that. Uh, but it's also about being inclusive. Again, as I talked about, with our population being as diverse it is, as it is. Excuse me, excuse me, in several different ways. It's important that we embrace that here. So, um, Jamie put together some numbers for me, and what we saw from the July through April this year compared to last year, um, is Um, is an increase in revenue of just over 171,000 and facility use is up 10%. So again, we're moving the right direction. Um, we've had a lot of really positive comments about including the outdoor pool as well. So I think we're gonna see more and more of that happening. Some of the needs there, um, and I'm just talking facilities on this, um, between the two. Again, kind of the branding or the marketing, I guess, if you will, right? Um, and getting the word out more and more. And making sure that people know we exist and what we do and what we offer. Cause we know, we want to be sure they know as well. Um, and then this would fall into also the facility updates, capital improvements. Staff does a really good job with what they can do each year to do a little bit here or there. Um, and we've been really grateful for the energy efficiency plan for the HVAC units. Some of those types of things that quite honestly would have been very difficult to do otherwise. Uh, ongoing planning and community involvement. And then uh, looking truly at what are issues and opportunities uh, that we can embrace there as well. So. These are just a few comments. I'm not gonna read them. I'm sure you, you did when you received this. These were on Facebook. There's many different ones. Uh, these were some I selected um, to put on here. Uh, we just really get a lot of people that enjoy uh, the facility and what the staff does there. Okay, so the last little bit that I'm gonna talk about here is our recreation and special events. Again, I'm not gonna identify a special event separately, but. The staff at the family fitness center in that particular division does the majority of the recreation. Um, and events for the city. Um, if it's specific to golf, obviously it's at the golf course or arts and culture, it's specific to that staff there. Uh, but otherwise, anything in between, uh, those guys work really, really hard uh, for this. So we are seeing a program participation increase. Uh, the same timeframe that I mentioned with fitness center of over 16,000. To be honest, that would be higher, as you can see below, there's increased demand for some programming. Some for new programming, some for programming that we're already offering, but we're maxed out because. Uh, we don't have enough staff is really the problem with that. And we're doing better. But we're not quite where we need to be. So there's a waiting list and, and people that need to get on. So that. That increase of 16,000 actually would be higher if we were able to accommodate them. Um, when I talk about needs. In particular for the programs and for the recreation. Facility updates would be providing more programmable space. You know, we're maxed out in some of our facility areas. And so. Um, you know, how can we add to that or what can we do trying to be creative with different ways of offering things? Uh, capital improvements could be, for example, the softball. Complex. Uh, there's some concrete work that needs to be done, some of those types of things. So. So even though we're talking about programs, yeah, you have to have the, the uh, facilities, right? And they have to be in good order for us to, to operate some of those things as well. And then of course, the ongoing planning and community. Um, involvement. So here's, I just, this is the last slide. I just wanted to, to show you a little bit, kind of a snippet. Of some of the programs that you see in some of these different areas. So the adult sports. Uh, the fitness and, and you can see on some of the fitness, the small group training, personal training, bootcamp, youth athletic training. We contract uh, with individuals that have expertise in these, so those can fluctuate a little bit. They can change up a little bit based off of who we have. Uh, coming and, and offering those types of programs. Youth sports, um, adaptive, we're very proud of some of the adaptive programs that we offer. Uh, for our community. Um, most communities do not have that. Salt Lake County does have an adaptive program, so they try to cover as much of the county as possible, but what we found years ago. Was that it, we didn't feel it was sufficient for our city, just because they, they only had a handful of staff to cover so much. So we were able to offer some of these things. We're, we're quite proud of some of the things that we're able to do for our adaptive element of our community. Those with disabilities of different kinds. Uh, miscellaneous, you can see a few of the things here. The RC car races are growing in popularity. Uh, we have people that come to our indoor tournaments from, all the way from like Oregon and Colorado. And we've been contacted at the national level for them wanting to bring a national. Uh, tournament or competition, if you will, to our city. Uh, so it's, it's kind of fun. You'll have to come out next time we have one. I'll make sure that you know about it. And then aquatics, and I, I put that article there. Um, our aquatics program is. Second to none, honestly, in the state. And I know I'm a little biased, but. But our staff does a great job. As a matter of fact, our aquatic second section supervisor gave me like a full list of different things, which I couldn't fit on there. But I will say this, we have swimmers that are ranked nationally. We have one young lady. That uh, nationally in four of the six events that she was in, in Florida. Um, she ranked in the top 10. This is not only good for this life skill and the health and wellness we talked about. But this is good for scholarship opportunities as well. You know, these are, these are uh, great programs for our community. So I will just leave it at that and see if you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
Yeah. For so what extent are residents involved in like, for example, we used to have an arts council and I know we talked about, you know, West Valley creatives and even. Looked at a. Community arts engagement model from like Fresno, California or something like that, but. How's, how's that going in terms of some kind of resident, formal resident involvement in a committee or a council?
That's, that's a great question. So we do have a foundation board. Um, that includes some residents as well as uh, city employees and, and whatnot. Um, the focus is more on the arts and culture foundation and the fundraising and some of the different things that we can do there. But we have talked and, and that's why actually that was one of the needs on there was more of that in queue, community engagement or involvement. Um, we want to do more of that. I, I don't know if it's bringing back. The um, advisory board, I believe is what, was it cap? No. Cap, yeah. Um, or if it's gonna look a little different.
Arts council.
Right, right. The arts council was it towards the very beginning, as I recall.
District committee.
Yeah, yes. And so you're gonna see something like that come to fruition for sure. And we're gonna try to, it'd be nice if we could have it as a group to identify both. All of the arts and culture, including the theater, as well as cultural celebration center and all of that as it comes together. Um, we don't have that in place right now, though. But, but it is on our, it, it, it's on our radar, which is why. I had that listed on there as well. We want to see more of that. And as some of you may recall, when we did the feasibility study with Utah State. Um, finished it up during the first year of COVID, honestly. Uh, with our focus groups and some of the things we did there, arts and culture. Was even though that wasn't part of our department at the time, so we didn't ask a lot of questions about it. It still came up as something that's important to the community. So we definitely, we want to utilize. Our community and talk with them and engage them as much as possible, really in all of these areas. So, great question. Thank you. Yes.
What are your thoughts about Mid Valley um, arts theater? Is that art, performing arts theater?
The one in Taylorsville that they're just.
How they're competing with us and kind of the whole. Uh, landscape on, that that changes with, with that being added.
Great question. So um, to my understanding, that particular facility. Is being more rented out, that, so they're not. They're not uh, running their own productions, their own. You know, plays and, and different things like that. They'll be like, this group wants a place to show. A production or a play, and so they'll rent the facility to them and they can do it. So. It's got a little different mission than what we have, and they're going a little bit different direction than what we do. So we don't feel that it will be um, a competition. To, to us and what we're trying to accomplish. A, another educational element that uh, I neglected to talk about with our theater. Uh, we will, you'll see over the next year, we'll be starting uh, classes for uh, performing, you know. Um, the acting, the directing, the technical um, skill set. Uh, for people that want to learn that a little bit more too. So we're, we're, we're looking at a bigger picture, a bigger package, if you will. Than have it be a, a rental facility. So.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick for our neighborhood health audit update.
Thank you, Rere. Ensure my screen. All right. So our neighborhood health audit, I know we have uh, some council members that are, are not familiar with this. Tool that we have, it really is unique to West Valley and not, not aware of any other city that has a tool like this. So I'll just briefly describe what it is and for those that are new and. Uh, actually show an example of the, the audit and then also some of the, the maps that we can generate from the audit. So. It is something we do annually. Uh, we divided the city into 70 different neighborhoods and then track a number of different metrics for those neighborhoods. And you can see here some of the things we look at. So the, the mix of housing. The school performance, uh, condition of the infrastructure, demographic information. Calls for service and other things uh, that are in that, in that audit. And by the way, the, the reason it's referred to as an audit is we. Wanted to keep that information uh, close to the vest in that we don't want to. Have a neighborhood be disparaged out in the community. So we try to keep that again, uh, close to the vest. This uh, slide here just shows how we generate a score. So when we look at each neighborhood. We try to come up with a, a quantitative way of, of measuring again, the health, if you will, of that neighborhood. And so it's. Comprised of a number of different factors. So for example, the county assessor looks at. The overall condition of a home. So we use that as one of the factors. We look at uh, the percentage of homes that are rented in a neighborhood is another factor. Uh, the, the value of the housing, again, the uh, school test scores. So a number of things that go into that score. Uh, that are, again, we compare those against each of those, uh, each of those neighborhoods. And so uh, early this morning, I sent an email to the council with a link. Uh, for each of you to be able to access the, the audit information. And so we've been, uh, again, we do this uh, audit annually and we. Uh, started the information in. Uh, around 2016, but then we went back and generated the reports clear back to 2010. So you have between 2010 and 2020s, the information they'll show. Just for a minute, a couple of examples, so you can see how to navigate to the link. So we pull up. Couple of examples here. So first of all, in the, when you click on the link. You'll see this list of folders when you click on that link. So again, there's a folder for each year. There's also a map of all the neighborhoods, which looks like this. So you can see how the city was divided into these 70 neighborhoods. That are roughly a half mile square. Again, that didn't always work out depending on. Road configurations, but generally they're about a half mile square. And then this uh, next example here would be. The audit again for 2020 itself. So for each neighborhood, so of the 70 neighborhoods, you have a map that highlights the. The boundaries of that neighborhood. So in this case, this one's the, what we refer to as the Parkway neighborhood. And then you can see there are a number of, again, statistics here. So the number of single family homes, single family detached homes, the average lot size. Uh, average year built. There's the school uh, test score performance for that neighborhood, uh, demographic information. We also get uh, market data for housing in the neighborhood. So in this case, in that particular neighborhood in 2020, only, only one home sold. And you can see the, the value of that home versus what the assessed value from the county is for all homes in that neighborhood. Then uh, on the third page, you have the calls for service for both police and code enforcement. Cases as well as information about permits that were pulled. So that's the, you can see, for example, the number of additions or new homes for that particular neighborhood. So again, this same information is available for all, all 70 neighborhoods in the city. So going back to. The presentation here. So just to show you what we can do with some of that information. So this map shows for 2020, and we're still working on the 2021 uh, audit. Uh, by neighborhood, what percentage of the homes are rented? And so just for, for reference. The overall city average is about 12%. So about 12% of homes in the city are single family detached homes are rented. And so the ones that are in yellow are pretty close to the average, but then as you get into the greens, they're below average, meaning. There's fewer homes rented. And then the orange and red would be ones, neighborhoods that have a higher percentage of homes that are rented. Uh, then here, this would be the assessed value. Now a couple of disclaimers here, obviously in 21, the values went up substantially. And also assessed value from the county tends to trail market values. They tend to be, the county tends to be a little lower. But here again, you can see how uh, different neighborhoods uh, measure up here. And then in terms of a snapshot, these are looking at the score. So again. When you put all of those different numbers in a blender, so to speak, and come up with kind of a uh. Overall score, you can see how the different neighborhoods uh, compare across the city. But another thing we can do, because we've been doing this annual audit since 2010, is compare. Neighborhoods over time. So these next couple of slides show a couple of examples. So. Here you can see an example of how neighborhood uh, home values have increased. Now all neighborhoods have seen an increase in value, of course, especially lately. But some neighborhoods have seen a greater increase than others. Now, one example of this, if you look at this neighborhood uh, that's along 7200 west and 4100 south. You could look at that and say, well, why is it that they increased so much? Well, in that particular neighborhood, that had a new development built within that timeframe. And so you have all those new homes that added substantially and raised the overall value of the neighborhoods. That's one example of why that would happen. And then I guess this one again, I think is interesting. You look at. How the score has changed from 2010 to 2020. So which neighborhoods are. Again, based on the metrics we've talked about, which ones have improved and which ones maybe are um. Not, or maybe even declining in some ways based on, again, these different metrics. So just again, wanted to provide the, the council an update on. That these again, tools are available that uh, again, using that link, you can access each of these and a report. One other thing I just wanted to point out before I close here would be one other. Report that's available on that link. And so in addition to having the. The overall audit report for. Each neighborhood, we also have a report for each year that's the city altogether. Okay? So in this case, this shows you the total number of homes. The uh, average lot size of all homes in the city. Uh, it's interesting that the average year built happens to be the year that we uh, incorporated 1980. You can see all of the, the numbers. Again, these are school test score averages across the entire city. And so as you look at an individual neighborhood, you can see how it stacks up against just the city uh, as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Is it? How easy is it to get the data? Out of these reports for you?
To, to collect the data?
To get it. So I'm looking at sidewalk network coverage. We look at this neighborhood. How much, I mean, it says, this one I'm looking at is 87%. Can we? Is it easy to find out what that is in linear feet? So that when we look at sidewalk, what do we want to do over the next 10 years? See what, what areas need it more than others, maybe, and. Be good to have the data.
We can and, and, and just one way we measure that is we look at, and we're looking at a street. If, if a street has sidewalk on at least one side, we consider that as having sidewalk. But that is something through our mapping system that could be generated. I mean, it's, it's not in the report, but it, it could be calculated.
Same thing with street lights. Something we talked about. Putting together a schedule for street lights. This information, the data would be helpful and put in this, a schedule together.
Great idea. Thank you. Anybody else? Great idea. Thank you. Anybody else?
Add my praise and echo Scott's sentiment that this can be a very powerful tool as is, and also with some tweaks in finding areas, which these are all numbers and statistics and percentages, but they represent people and families and households. And with my background in demography, when you first showed me this, I was just, I was flabbergasted at the the level of detail that he went into. Because these are not cut clean with census tracts and other boundaries. So that's, there's a lot of work that goes into this. And this is a really unique tool for our city to use, a powerful tool.
Thank you. Maybe just one other comment would be that just a practical use, if you will, as we are working on Operation My Hometown. This really helped us hone in on neighborhoods to 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 focus in on. As you look at some of those areas that are maybe we're struggling, if you will, those are areas where we are working or utilizing Operation My Hometown to really make a difference.
How many years in the My Hometown would we need to be to be able to see what the impact has been, the changes?
Great, great question. So my hometown now is only about two years in the making. And and so there is oftentimes in some of the data, a little bit of lag, right? As far as, so I would think we'd still need a few more years of doing this before we would start to see some of those results starting to trickle into some of these reports.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council calendar, is there anybody have any concerns with the calendar? Jake wanted me to remind you all of the Memorial Day program on Monday and encourage you, if you have the day off, to come to it. And a council member reminded me that everybody here has the day off. So all of staff that would like to come are welcome and encouraged to come as well. And you can tell Jake I did my job. Okay. Our potential future agenda items, does anybody have anything?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have one, Mayor. Thank you. After discussing Shropshire Shopping Center a few times and learning the photos from my Steve Patrick through Nick Cameron sent to us a few days ago. So I I want to, I want to print it up for voting maybe next week. And I need your support. It says, that'd be okay. Can I call your name and say, are you in or you out? That'd be all right. What do you think? How about I start from from the the Zooming right now, it's Will on the Zoom. Is it, Will, are you supporting that? I want to go to bring it to the voting for next week. I mean, okay with you?
I I'm fine reviewing and, you know, if the staff can prepare it for for next week or in a in a future study meeting, I'm I'm fine.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mayor. I forgot one thing.
We don't have meeting next week.
Oh.
Let me just ask. Let me just ask the council if they are in favor of having this on the agenda in the future. I think it will have to go through Planning Commission first. So it wouldn't be like we would have it on the agenda in two weeks. But is there any appetite for changing the one acre commercial to three quarters of an acre commercial before we worry about which week?
It's a two, 0.75.
Okay, yeah, that's three quarters.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so Will said he would be in favor. Anyone else in favor of revisiting that?
I am.
You are?
Yeah, we're bringing it to us to study.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I'm willing. So there's four.
Okay, I appreciate the the concrete nature of the suggestion. So 0.75 acres, we would keep the ordinance as it is, we just change the figure, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Start that process.
If that's how that works, then yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Then I, she's done. I've compiled the KPIs and filtered through the duplicates.
Okay.
So if we want to put that on a study meeting next month, we can do that.
Kind of a lighter agenda night?
Yeah.
Study session?
Kind of hammer things up.
Okay. I work with everybody. All right. Anything else? I sometimes move and I forget those people. So nobody has anything up there, right? Okay. Sorry, Zoom people. You're those people. Okay, any council reports? Can't tell if Lars is almost going to talk or not. You're good? Jake, anything from you?
Reports.
Council reports.
My kids love the Dino Dig feature.
Awesome.
I think that's the only one for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, well now move on to the reviewing the agenda items for the RDA, Housing Authority, the Building Authority. And I don't know if you're taking that or Mr. Welch.
I'll cover them, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So first one note on all three of them. Unlike the general fund budget, we do the final budget approvals for those three agencies because there's no truth in taxation, public hearings or property tax considerations. We do those at the beginning of June and there have been no changes on the proposed budgets, as you saw last time during the tentative adoption. So all three of those will be on for that on this night. And then all three of them have one or two budget openings. So the RDA has two, one for the Neighborhood Services Change made a few weeks back and one for recognizing increment payments coming in exceeding our projections. Let's see, on the Housing Authority, the budget open there, so I'm scrolling to it. Is also two, there's a rollover for Housing Authority administration fees and a million dollars of additional funding for HUD or from HUD. This would go to Tom's earlier question on what type of COVID-related grants we got or received or receiving. So that's one of those. The last one, Building Authority. Click up here. All right, see here has one, yes. It's got one budget opening item, which is the lease bonds or the lease revenue bonds for the core building project which you all have seen over the past few weeks, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or concerns about any of those that you're the chairs of? Seeing none, we will move on. Do we have a need for a closed session?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we have just one less, one last quarter of business.
Listen to it, too.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, my turn. See you at 6:30.